All right, one minute warning, one minute warning. All right, I'm Mayor Matt Gerding, call the February 17th, 2025 City Council Meeting for the City of Somersworth to order. Uh, City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Pepin.
Yep.
Vincent?
I am here.
Gibson?
Here.
Parity Katzenzero?
Here.
Micho?
Yeah.
Witham?
Excused.
Goodwin?
Here.
Cameron?
Excused.
Barry?
Here.
Counselor Goodwin will lead the council on the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next on the agenda is the recognition of our indigenous people, our native ancestral Americans. This meeting takes place on Indikina, which is the unceded traditional ancestral homeland of the Abenaki, Pennecook, and Wabanaki peoples, past and present. We acknowledge and honor with gratitude the land, waterways, living beings, and the Alnabuck, the people who have stewarded Indikina throughout the generations. Item four on the agenda are any scheduled public hearings. We have two this evening. First up, we have a public hearing for ordinance 15-25, which is to amend Chapter 13, Police Offenses, Section 4, Dogs Regarding Revised Definitions to Include Dogs at Large. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak towards ordinance 15-25? Anyone who wishes to speak? Yeah, if you would like to speak, come up to the mic and please state your name and the ward in which you live. Come up to the mic right here, if you don't mind. Make sure the green light is on. If it's not, there's a button.
Do you want to, do you want me to read it?
That's fine. Yeah, if you want to go past her, that's more than fine. That's fine. Yeah, if you, if you want to use that as a reference, that's more than, more than welcome. Again, if just, yeah, thank you. If you wouldn't mind just making sure to state your name and the ward in which you live or your address.
Sure. My name is Sarah Lavoy. I am in Ward Four. I have been working with Crystal since, I don't know, July or August, discussing the situation with the dog leash laws and, well, as the laws for dogs as they are right now because of an incident, actually many incidents that have occurred with my dog being attacked by off-leash dogs in the 12 years of his life, one of which was last February, so a year ago now, which actually happened to also happen in the same location as a friend that I have with me, Jackie. We found out it was actually the same house with the same dogs that attacked her dog and injured her dog. So we kind of got involved in trying to have the laws adjusted so that they, that things are more safe. I do have something here that was written to David Witham and Kenneth Vincent, but it was done so within the past couple of nights, and it appears that they probably have not had a chance to look it over or read it over. It would affect what I have to say further, so would you like me to read it now?
Please feel free, yeah.
Okay. This is going to take a couple of minutes, is that okay?
Yeah, you have, we have about five minutes.
Okay, so this is from Jeremy Rhodes of Ward Two. He is also on the planning and conservation boards, and a dear friend of mine. It says, "Hi, Dave and Ken, hope you're both doing well," et cetera, et cetera. "Wanted to write about an item in the 208 council vote, modification to the city's leash laws. I'm in favor of the bill as it's submitted. It clarifies and modernizes a piece of our city's law that could definitely use a refresh. However, I'd encourage you both to consider going back for another swing at this in the near future to put us in a better place than the current bill does. The current proposal still permits dogs at large as long as they are under voice control. This is problematic for two primary reasons. First, it puts us out of step with commonly placed law in several similar cities in New Hampshire and therefore not fully addressing public safety issue. And second, it places Somersworth's police in a difficult position regarding enforcement of the law. Looking at other New Hampshire cities, Nashua, Manchester, Concord, Portsmouth, Salem, and Rochester all require dogs at large to be leashed, with a few exceptions such as dog parks that are specifically marked as off-leash areas. While some may argue that population levels are an argument against this imposition, I'd maintain that density is a better measure of the risk of dogs encountering high-risk situations, traffic, other animals, humans, and several of these communities have a lower population density than we do. Further, allowing dogs to be under voice control puts our police officers in a difficult position regarding enforcement. When is a dog no longer under voice control? Do they choose to enforce the law at the first point where an animal strays from its controller, the first time it disobeys a command, the first lunge towards a person or animal, physical contact, after the first bite? This is an arguable point for both the officer and the owner and creates an ambiguous situation up until the first point that a threat is imminent, in itself an arguable point. A positive requirement that animals be leashed both puts us in step with similar communities and removes all ambiguity for both owners and LEOs, I'm assuming he means law enforcement officers, rather than letting us remain in a state of debate. Again, while I support the current item, it's a step in the right direction rather than a resolution, and he thanks for your attention and service, et cetera. Just to add to that, I originally came to Crystal hoping that laws could in some way be amended, that this could never happen again to another dog, especially an injury. I understand that it would be difficult, if not impossible, to require people with dogs to contain them within fences, electric or physical, but I do strongly feel that a requirement of leashing when at large, if I'm using that term properly, anytime it's beyond personal property, would reduce the ambiguity for everyone, especially the police who are upholding the laws. Beyond that, I guess I would ask if anything could be done differently for circumstances where dogs are trained to attack and possibly kill, because one violation of even the edited, beyond the edits that have been proposed to the leash-specific law could be deadly for any dog, or a person, for that matter.
Thank you. Unfortunately, we can't do discussion or debate with you right now, but when that comes up later, I'm sure some of those points could be discussed.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak regarding ordinance 15-25? Yeah, thank you. Come on up, and again, if you could state your name and ward in which you live, that would be great.
My name is Jackie Demming. I live in Ward Four. I just want to share a little personal story in favor of the leash law. I've been a resident of Somersworth since 2020. On the morning of June 29th, around 7:30 a.m., I was walking my dog on a leash when one of three unsecured dogs left its backyard, came out onto public property, and attacked my dog. Thankfully, my dog sustained only minor injuries. She is large and could take the brunt force of this attack, but had it been a smaller dog, a toddler, or an elderly person, the outcome likely would have been much different. After the attack, I spoke with law enforcement, who assured me they would go by the dog's house to speak with the owner. Upon further investigation, I discovered that the same dog had attacked my neighbor Sarah's dog a few months prior to my attack. My neighbor also spoke to law enforcement, and we also went together to speak to law enforcement, and again, they assured us that we, they would speak to the owner. It's been a year since Sarah's attack and eight months since mine. I drive by this house every single day, and all three dogs are still unleashed, unfenced, and have no barrier between them and the general public. It's a high-traffic area and a direct threat to public safety. If there's not going to be a barrier between any dog and the general public, then a dog must be leashed. Nashua, Manchester, Concord, Portsmouth, Salem, and Rochester all have leash laws. Dozens of cities nationwide have leash laws, and it's time for our city to catch up. I believe leash laws would be easier for police to enforce over our current voice-control law. Leash laws are common sense when it comes to the safety of dogs, their owners, and the general public. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak towards ordinance 15-25? Yes, thank you. And again, if you could state your name and the ward in which you live.
Move it up a little bit, a little bit taller than she is. Adam Lavoy, Ward Four. Sarah's my wife. I wanted to bring one thing to point here, is that in Somersworth, we have a lot of houses that are right, right near the sidewalk or very close to the street, and that makes some of the property laws regarding dogs kind of difficult. I'll share you, with you an example of what I saw one time. I was heading to the bank, Citizens Bank over here, and I was at the corner of Green Street in Washington, and I was stopped because there's a stop sign there, of course, right? I watched a, two dogs come out of a house right on the corner there and go after a man who had a guide dog. I can only assume that he was blind as he was crossing the street. Now, this, this dog came up and was chasing after him. I, fortunately, I saw a police, he ran right in front of the police, a police car. So I assume that it was taken care of in some manner, but it's dangerous to allow people to just have even on their, you know, on their property, what the definition of that line looks like and what the consequences of that are can be complicated, and I understand that, but I just wanted to put that into the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak towards ordinance 15-25? Anybody else? All right, with that, we will close the public hearing on ordinance 15-25. Secondly, tonight, we have a public hearing for Resolution 36-25, which is a City Council vote to authorize a bond to replace the water main on Main Street from Indigo Hill Road to NATO Street. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to speak towards Resolution 36-25? Anyone who wishes to speak towards Resolution 36-25? All right, with that, I will close both public hearings. All right, it brings us to item five, which is comments by visitors. City Council and Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings. In accordance with Council Rule 7-C, a time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect unless the council wishes to suspend the rules. Speakers shall not enter into debate with any persons, the mayor, council members, city manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Anyone who wishes to speak? All right, we will move on to item six, which is approval of the consent calendar. The Chair will obtain a motion to approve the consent calendar, which includes the minutes of the joint City Council and Somersworth School Board Budget Workshop, which was held on February 3rd, as well as the minutes of the City Council meeting held on February 3rd. Do I have a motion?
A point of order?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add the Jeremy Rhodes email into the consent calendar, just so we have it on record. I know that the clerk took the minutes, but maybe we could end that and if that's not a problem.
Sure, without objection.
And then I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Yep, Counselor Vincent moves to the consent calendar.
Second.
Be approved as presented, seconded by Counselor Goodwin. Question for the council is the adoption of the consent calendar. If you're in favor of the motion, you'll state by saying aye. If you're not, you will state by saying no. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, eyes have it. Consent calendar is adopted. Item seven is comments by city councilors. Counselor Vincent, please.
Thanks again, Your Honor. So I have been, I was away out of the area and came home to some really tough, tough storm that had passed through. I guess we had three or four while I was gone. Great time to leave. And I received an email, I think it was on Sunday, and I want to apologize to the city manager because I sent it both to the city manager and the Public Works. And as I looked up Jeremy Rhodes' email, I just realized that for some reason yours was ejected. I apologize for that. So I did send it to Mike Bravinsky about an issue on Lilnor Avenue. The concern was from a constituent that one side of the road had a lot more snow than the other. I, he, Director Bravinsky called me back and said he got the, got it and would follow up on it. And I got a call from the constituent who was very happy with the way that the whole process went. You know, good customer service as not only a city councilor, but as a state representative means everything. You know, we just had this reevaluation, right? And it caused a lot of properties to go up. I spoke about it last meeting, more than just a normal increase. It's almost a three-time, three-year increase. And to give the service back to our customers as councilors, that's what we do. We have to serve. We're, we're here to serve the people of the city, all of them. No matter if you think that you don't like the idea or not, you still have to give the respect and call back, and not all people call back. And he, and the constituent called me back, and he was very ecstatic, and he's lived here his whole life. And the former mayor lives on that street too, and he was pretty ecstatic too. So it's just good to be able to serve and give back to the community because it does come at a price. And the meeting never stops running. So he was very ecstatic, and the professionalism of the Public Works Director to follow up, great job. And I apologize again, Bob. Thank you.
Other comments by city councilors? Yes, Counselor Parity Katzenzero.
Yes, just wanted to thank the community members for coming out and sharing your stories. I really appreciated that email as well from Jeremy. I, I think I, I have one proposed amendment that I'll get to when we talk about the ordinance, but I also think there are other potential improvements that we could make if we look at this further. But I do, I do thank you for coming out and agree that this needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Barry.
I have two quick things. I wanted to give a shout out to Captain Sutherland and the Police Department. I got a email from a constituent on Water Street, and they were singing kudos to the Police Department about the great job that they've done helping clean up some of the drug problems and other things that are going along that street. So I just want to make sure that I don't forget, or it doesn't get sidelined when I get to closing comments. So I wanted to make sure that the Police Department hears those good shout outs and that the neighbors are very much appreciative of what's going on there and having that turn around, go from bad things to getting better and hopefully keeps getting better as we go. I just have a few comments around the leash law. I'm an owner of two small dogs. They're both under 20 pounds, and to be very honest, it is one of those things that I dread. And it has happened with me, not luckily in my ward, Ward Four, but it's something that is always on the back of my mind. One thing I do want to keep in mind, though, when this was deliberated, I understand that because this was not given to individual towns by the state, we have to be wary of what the state enforces, and I think that's what becomes part of that issue. So I think that's something to also keep in mind, because I would love to say leash for everything, but I think it becomes a, can we enforce that against this, what the state says? So that was my only other thought.
Thank you. Other comments by city councilors? Brings us to item eight, which is communications. We have none. Item nine, which is presentations of petition, petitions, excuse me, and disposal thereof by reference or otherwise, we have none. Brings us to item 10, which is the mayor's report. Is, once again, not only budget season here in Somersworth, but also budget season in the state of New Hampshire. We have a biennial budget, so it happens every other year. But as legislators at the State House begin preparing to develop their two-year budget for the state, I do want to remind councilors and folks here in the city that it is time to communicate your needs to your state reps, your senators, and the governor. We in Somersworth are certainly well aware of the challenges that we face, but time and time again, it seems that those who make decisions in Concord are not fully aware, or, God forbid, are choosing to neglect their need, or the needs of us and cities like us. Year after year, certainly education funding, it seems to not be enough. Services seem to be cut by the state, and the state chooses to give tax breaks to wealthy Granite staters rather than help lower property taxes for folks here in the city of Somersworth and across the state. So I highly recommend that you pay attention to any legislation that might interest you, as well as the entire budget process, and make every attempt to advocate for bills you care about. I think it's more important than ever. One form of advocacy that we as elected officials have participated in the past, and for, I think, a number of budgets now, is a letter that was signed by locally elected officials, asking that the state work to increase education funding, to help districts like ours pay for quality education for our students, and to also help offset our local property taxes. This is a letter that I have penned since, I think, 2021, that state budget year, so that's three budgets ago. That first year, I was able to get around 80 locally elected leaders to sign on. Then, in our current budget that we're in, which was formed back in 2023, I had over 150 signatories on a similar letter. And I'd actually like to think that in that, that year, this letter that we sent actually helped with the education funding increases that we saw that year. And so I'm aiming this year with this letter to get over 200 locally elected leaders to sign on, with the hope that it will be even more impactful and we can actually see some real dramatic change. So, to city councilors and school board members who have already signed on here in Somersworth, thank you so much for your support. To those who have not yet committed, again, I'm once again asking you to join me and our colleagues across the state in signing on to this letter and asking for more state support for education. It's a critical need for our city. As I'm sure you all very well know, when it comes to our own annual budget struggles, many of them stem from the lack of support that we get from the state related to education funding. Year after year, we are debating about what programs or staff or resources that we will have to cut in order to make ends meet, whether we want to do this or not. And it's really difficult to do, and it's hard on our city's taxpayers when we, you know, have to maybe decide whether we want to keep things and know that it's, it's worth it for us to pay for those, even though it might increase property taxes, mostly because the state is shirking its constitutional responsibility and obligation to properly fund schools in New Hampshire. So I'm hopeful that all of you can support this letter and help me send a powerful message to Concord, to the governor, to state legislators, so that we can see a state budget that actually dramatically addresses the inadequacies that we all sadly know too well. So that's my first thing. I know for city councilors, I've shared that with you all, so please feel free to sign on, or just let me know in person, and I can get you signed on for sure. Secondly, tonight, I'd also like to inform council about two resolutions that are before you for first reading. Both Resolution 40-25, which is council vote to dissolve the Mental Health and Wellness Committee, and Resolution 41-25, which is a vote to dissolve the Sustainability Committees. Both of these committees have been certainly vital to this community and have accomplished a number of different initiatives under their tenure of their existence, but over the past few years, they seem to have either become duplicative or unused, and so I believe it's time to sunset both of these. The Hilltop Mental Health and Wellness Committee certainly did a phenomenal job with the initiative of allowing the city of Somersworth to become a recovery-friendly workplace, among many other things. However, since their last meeting, which was in, I think, 2022, a new grassroots community organization has sprung up that is actually filling the void left by the absence of the Mental Health and Wellness Committee. This community organization, which is called the Hilltop Health Alliance, has been meeting regularly since, I believe, last November, and is now kind of the torchbearer for initiatives related to community actions around mental health and wellness. And so this is exactly what we, as I think, local elected officials would like to see, is community organizations taking over the charge of something that we had started. And so I would say that this has been quite a success, that this committee, though it was a city committee for a while, has now become something so popular that those in the community have organized around it and created their own group and organization. So with dedicated efforts that have been shown by the Hilltop Health Alliance, I'm confident that community input and efforts can continue with the existence of that organization, and we no longer need the presence of our city committee, which is the Hilltop Mental Health and Wellness Committee. So I'm looking to dissolve that with council support. And secondly, the Sustainability Committee, though successful again in its own time, has kind of become a victim of inaction. Unfortunately, this committee has also not met in a number of years. I think since 2022, it remains chairless, and the terms of its entire membership have expired. So were this an active and engaged committee? Again, it's a citizen committee. I would certainly not be proposing this tonight if, if the community was actively engaged in this and working in this committee and doing stuff for it. But it seems that the committee has kind of sunsetted itself, and so I think that it would be important for us to formalize this through our, this resolution I've proposed. Again, I want to assure the city council and the folks here tonight that any efforts or resolutions or ordinance or changes in the city that would have been handled by the Sustainability Committee could very easily be addressed by a number of other committees or boards that exist in the city. So we have like the City Tree Board, or our Conservation Commission, or even if it's like Public Works and the Environment. Those are just, to name a few of the committees that could potentially handle some of the things that Sustainability Committee worked on. So I want to be clear that there will be no vacuum created by the loss of this committee, and it hasn't, again, been functioning since 2022, and seems to just be one that maybe is worth dissolving for the time being until down the road. If we do have another group of active citizens who are interested in forming it again, we can do the same thing. And lastly, I'm actually going to be sunsetting the Youth Advisory Committee, which was a mayoral committee and requires no formal vote by council, and it's a committee that actually was formed when I first came on, hasn't met at all, and seems to not be active as well. So I'm kind of saying by, to that one as well. And that concludes my mayor's report. Next on the agenda is item 11, which is reports of standing committee. First up is Finance Committee. Chairman Witham, though not here tonight, informed me that there is no Finance Committee, or there has been no Finance Committee letter, or meeting since our last council meeting, but I believe their meeting, he told me.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes. Thank you. At 5:00. Government Operations Committee. Counselor Michu?
We have not met, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Economic Development Committee. Counselor Goodwin.
Thanks, Your Honor. Economic Development met directly before the council meeting this evening. We had one agenda item, which was to review a sign application for two Somersworth Plaza. There's a existing language in our ordinances that require the Economic Development Committee and the manager's office to review sign applications for businesses in the plaza, as the plaza parking lot and facade is owned by the city. The council approved that sign application and made the recommendation to modify that zoning language so that in future, the manager's office and Economic Development Committee do not need to review sign applications, and that they could just follow the normal sign application process, which would go through the Planning Department, following our existing sign regulation review process, including HDC review if it were in the HDC. And then we adjourned.
Thank you. Public Safety has not also met since our last meeting. Oh, no, I'm sorry. That was Public Works and the Environment. I apologize. Public Safety.
I have nothing to report.
Also haven't met. Good. I was just predicting the future. Public Works has not met. They are also meeting tomorrow at 5:00. Recreation Committee, I also got an update, has also not met from our chair. She just texted me not that long ago. So that's committee meetings. That was quick. My God. Brings us to item 12, which is reports of special committees. Have there been any reports of special committees? We got Counselor Parity Katzenzero and then Counselor Pepin.
Yes, the Communications and Community Outreach Committee met just before the Economic Development Committee, just before this meeting. And we have, for the last couple of meetings, just been working on. And we have, for the last couple of meetings, just been working on some new resident information. So we reviewed a mock-up of a flyer that we could hand out to new residents with some city information and a version for schools. As we continue to revise, we'll get more city staff and school staff input when we have a more solid draft. But that was really the only action item this evening. And I'll just say, if anybody, if anybody out there has a thing that they wish that they knew when they moved here, please email it to me and we'll include it in the flyer. Thanks.
Thank you. Right. Councillor Pepin.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We had the E nine one one meeting on February fifth at 1:00 p.m. at the Somersworth Police Department. We had approval of the minutes of April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The first thing on the agenda was address issue on three sixty-seven High Street. There's also a three sixty-seven A High Street, which the building is behind three sixty-seven, three sixty-seven High Street, which ends up being a long driveway right beside the head and neck surgical headquarters place on High Street. The person that has lived on the A building has a hard time getting deliveries. Mailman knows where the mail goes, but the delivery trucks don't seem to know. And it's kind of like a hideaway driveway, which is very hard to see in a roundabout way. It's just a small dirt pot. We discussed it at committee meeting, talking about trying to put a mailbox or whatever. It's too close to the road and it's, the visibility is not that good for it. So we're talking about making a private way, having an address, a street name for it. So they'd be, and the reasoning behind that is that there's quite a bit of land in the background of it. Staff is going to be working with the people that own the property because we're not quite sure. We think it belongs that had an ex-surgical center. So it's, staff is going to be working on that project, try to see if we can end up coming with a name. We talked to fire, police, and ambulance. It would be a little bit easier for it if it had a name. We could kind of like put a street sign at the beginning of the driveway, would identify that as a private way. But at least it signals for it. So if people are coming in for mutual aid for ambulance or whatever, they'd be able to find it a little bit easier because it's very difficult to find that way. Fifteen Blackwater, that was another discussion. That's the old livery building. The developers wants to put a new road in between, in between so it can access some of the builders that they got proposed in front of the planning board. One of the names is Willington Place. And one that he wanted was Woodford Ford Place. We kind of like didn't really want to go with that because we already have Woodside Commons and we have Wychuck Lane. So we tried to get away from that. So the committee decided to go to Willington Lane, Willington Place as the address. So hopefully you'll be getting a resolution on that in the near future. Next thing is a discussion of forty-four Rocky Hill Road. That was a building that burnt probably two or three years ago. It was, stayed vacant for about a year ago, for about a year or possibly a little bit longer. Developer bought it and redid the building. Then he also went to the planning board and had that lot subdivided. So it ended up being two lots instead of just one house lot. The house lot is forty-four Rocky Hill Road. The other parcel of land just got bought. His address is forty-four Rocky Hill Road. So he's trying to get driver's permit and he's trying to get a water tap into the, to the property. So which ended up had of having a discussion of how we're going to number the system. In between forty-four and forty-six, there's no extra numbers in between that, so we can put it. But if you go the opposite way, it means that the house that was been there for years, probably going to have to have the number changed to forty-two. There is, the next house beside it is forty. So we go forty, forty-two, and then forty, you know. So it would go in line. So we decided on trying to, and it's a shame that people just bought that house not even a year ago. And they're probably going to have to have their number changed again so in the postage. So we didn't know how else to address that outside of doing that. And then we had a lengthy discussion on eighty-two High Street. And basically it's a numbering problem. There's eighty-two, eighty-four, two stories, eighty-two and eighty-two above the same address. So we're trying to make them suites and whatever. So there's a long discussion on that. And that would be the end of my report.
Thank you. Other reports of special committees? Seeing then, I will turn it over to the city manager to deliver his manager's report.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members of council. I don't have any new information for any of the action items this evening. But I'd just like to read for the public our upcoming city council meetings, workshops, and special meetings. Monday, March seventeenth at seven p.m., we have a regular city council meeting. And at that time, the proposed budget ordinance for FY twenty twenty-six will be introduced for first reading. Saturday, April fifth at eight thirty a.m., we have the morning workshop where we invite community support organizations to meet with council as well as our various city department budgets are under review by the city council, and Your Honor. Monday, April seventh, at six p.m., there'll be a budget presentation, overview of the city and school budgets. At seven p.m., there'll be a next fiscal year proposed budget public hearing and a regular city council meeting. April twenty-first is a regular city council meeting. And then by council rules, the mayor has to schedule a special city council budget meeting if needed. So last year during that special budget meeting, the council actually took action and passed the budget ordinance at that meeting. So that's the upcoming calendar for introducing the budget and then council looking into the budget in greater detail. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. All right. Brings us to Item thirteen, which is Nominations, Appointments, and Elections. Under Nominations, Appointments, and Elections, in accordance with Council Rule seventeen, appointments, the following nominees are up for nomination this evening. We have Kimberly Shown for reappointment as a member of the historic district commission for a term of three years. And Elizabeth Nguyen for appointment as a member of the historic district commission for a term of three years. These appointees will stand in nomination until our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Brings us to Item fourteen, which is Items Laid on the Table. We have none. Brings us to fifteen, which is our unfinished business. First up is our ordinances, and the chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on ordinance fifteen dash twenty-five, which is to amend Chapter thirteen, Police Offenses, Section four, Dogs Related, excuse me, Regarding Revised Definitions to Include Dogs at Large, which if approved, would amend definitions related to dogs at large, dogs' accompaniment, owner, and enforcement officer, as well as sections related to seizure of unlicensed dogs, dogs running at large, and civil forfeiture penalties. City clerk.
Ordinance number fifteen twenty-five, to amend Chapter thirteen, Police Offenses, Section four, Dogs Regarding Revised Definitions to Include Dogs at Large.
Thank you. Ordinance fifteen dash twenty-five, have been read a first and second time, is now open to amendment. Councillor Parry, Caton Zero.
Yes, thank you. I, I state the amendment first before getting a second, right?
Yes.
I have two amend, well, okay. My amendment consists of two parts. Number one, the final paragraph on the first page of this resolution, the very last sentence, I propose striking the words "or disposed of." And then on the second page, under running at large, number one, the dog is restrained by being kept on a leash capable of controlling said dog. Or number two, the dog is accompanied by the owner or custodian and under their voice control. Instead of the period after control, I would add the words "within a posted off-leash area such as city dog park." And I'll explain further if I get a second.
Let's just give me one sec while we write that down. Within a posted off-leash area.
Such as city dog park.
My second.
All right. So we have a motion for an amendment made by councillor Parry, Caton Zero, a second by councillor Gibson. I will open it up to discussion. Let's do councillor Parry, Caton Zero first, and then councillor Vincent.
Yes, so the first one, I think, reflects above where we struck dispose of and replaced it with investigate. I think after such time, the dog remains unclaimed, then the dog may be surrendered or disposed of at the expense of the city. I feel like that is similarly outdated language and do not want to add something into our ordinances that may imply killing a dog. That's what it sounds like to me. And I think what we mean is surrendering a dog. And so I propose getting rid of or disposed of. And then the, you know, the real meat of it is the Second Amendment here. I think, I think it's the easiest way to get at the intent, which is to not allow dogs to just be under voice control, so to speak, when on public property. And so amending that to be kept on a leash or in a designated off-leash area would be the result of that amendment.
Great. Thank you. Councillor Vincent.
Thank you, Your Honor. This came from, I'm pretty sure, the police department, police chief. So I'd like to suspend council rules and have the police chief come up and give us his thoughts on this. And I also have a question on electronic fence devices.
Without objection, I don't even, but it seems like it should be fine. All right. Thank you. Chief, you are recognized. If you would like to come up, I think there's a few questions potentially.
And if I may continue?
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks a lot for coming up, chief.
Thank you.
So you've heard the proposed changes to the ordinance. Do you have any thoughts on it? Any type of legal ramifications? Do you think it's good or different? Just your opinion, please.
To your point of dispose of, it did catch my eye too, but it's still in the state RSA language. So that's why it was kept in. So maybe if we see what that looks like, it may be prudent to see what changes are consistent, inconsistent with the current state language for that. And the, the one that we had removed was not in the state language. So it was, it seemed prudent to do that. But the second part of it, if I could be reminded of what that would look like.
Sure. So the second part would read, the second number in full would read, "The dog is accompanied by the owner or custodian and under their voice control." The addition would read, "Within a posted off-leash area such as a city dog park." I think the city dog park is the only posted off-leash area, but if in the future there would be.
It's under amend Chapter thirteen, Section four, running at large.
Yes, under running at large. So a person who owns or keeps a dog within, I think there's a typo, within the city shall not permit or allow such a dog to be at large in the city unless, number one, the dog is restrained by being kept on a leash capable of controlling said dog. Or number two, the dog is accompanied by the owner or custodian and under their voice control within a posted off-leash area such as a city dog park.
So in effect, it would take away the option of having somebody with their dog in the public off a leash.
Correct. Yep.
I mean, I could only add that most of the complaints of dogs that are at large are, there's no owner around. And it seems consistent with, with other cities and towns that I've spoken to that when there's an issue of, you know, somebody reporting a loose dog, that there's no owner around. Or we very rarely get a, you very rarely see somebody with their dog off-leash. But when you do, they're very, you can tell they're a, they're a match pair or a, or a match trio. But, you know, it doesn't happen often, but when it does happen, it seems like the people know what they were doing. And dogs become at large when they leave their property and the owner's not right with them. So, you know, I think maybe there's room for debate on, on the second part of it, you know. As far, you know, I have seen the language about dog parks in other areas. We get calls sometimes of, you know, the Willian walking trails. And we have certain complaints out there of, of dogs off-leash, on-leash, and advocates for both sides. And my dog is a, I think, a twenty-six pound French bulldog who thinks he's an eighty-pound bulldog. But he's a, you know, personal preference, he's on a leash, just for the fact of somebody's point, smaller dogs. It's good to just pick them up and they're out of the fight. But. So the second part, you know, I think the, the first part maybe is see if that goes against what city lang, what state language is as far as dispose of. And, you know, I would, I would certainly say maybe there's room for debate on the second part.
Follow up.
Vincent, you're still recommended.
Thank you. And this is more a point of clarification. So I have dogs and I have an electric fence, but my house is off the beaten path. If I, if a dog was, had an electric fence and it's on private property, that doesn't have anything to do with this ordinance, correct?
Right.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Other questions for chief? Councillor Pepin and then councillor Parry, Caton Zero.
I guess my other question is, is I have a big German shepherd who weighs a hundred and ten pounds. He's been bitten twice on leash. All right. So I know how it is. My dog has been trained to stay on my property. When he was a pup, I got him, I walked, put him on a fifteen-foot leash. We kept walking our property till he knows where the boundary lines are and that's where he stays. I go out and play ball with him. If I can't go out and play ball with my dog in my property, I'm having a problem. Because he is on my property. It is my private property. And I guess that's where I, if I have to try to keep my dog on a leash to play ball with him and give him exercise, that's where I have a problem with. I understand exactly where the people are coming from. My concern is, is that unless the police department knows about it and can take corrective action by whoever's doing this, whoever can't control their dogs, they probably shouldn't have a dog in the first place. That's, that's my problem. All right. The second thing is if the police department's not doing their job and doing it the right way, that's another problem. I believe our police department does respond to complaints and they do their best they can. I, I, I'm, I have very, very mixed feelings because I am a dog lover. If you're going to have me keep my dog, that I have to put my dog on a leash in my own property and you can go to a dog park and let him free, that, that I'm having a little different, different of opinions here. So I, I would like whatever we do to have a legal opinion on it because I, I believe this is a conflict of state law. I don't know where we stand on this. I don't want to see the city of Somersworth come up with a lawsuit against us because we're eventually, because I'll be perfectly honest with you, if I get a ticket because my dog's in my own property, I will fight it. And that's just personally how I feel about it. So I guess that's all I got to say right now.
I just want to clarify. I think the chief had answered this when councillor Vincent had asked. But this will not impact your ability to have your dog off-leash on your own private property. Can, I guess I'll re-throw it back to the chief. As long as if you have no fence.
Yeah, there's no, this doesn't affect anybody's private property. And there's no state law that controls what happens on somebody's private property involving dogs.
Thank you for the clarification. Go ahead, councillor.
And I can understand where the say is coming from because they try to address all kinds of problems. I mean, people use dogs for hunting. You can't put a dog on a leash and go hunting with, you know, certain, certain things that they do for hunting things. So it's not that I'm against dogs being on leashing, or being taken care of. Like I say, my dog got, I mean, I don't think my dog was five months old, got bit by a dog. And I had him on leash. And two months ago, a lady trying to keep her dog on leash and bringing, bringing him to the car ended up, he ended up, he was a good-sized German shepherd, ended up attacking my dog. But he dragged her on the ground. He dragged her about a few feet before, before he, that dog got to my dog. And he took a bit at my, my dog. So, I mean, I, I understand exactly where you're coming from. And I, I, but I, I guess because I keep control of my dog, I guess I have a hard time with it. So I apologize for that, but that's where I stand right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Parry, Caton Zero.
Yes, thank you for that clarification. I was going to say the same. Nothing, nothing in this ordinance affects private property. I think that was a debate that we had. We certainly discussed, is it even worth bringing that to council? And it was a pretty, you know, quick answer of state law doesn't really allow that. And I'm not sure that we would even be successful in doing that. And I'm not sure that we would even be successful in doing that. The language that I am proposing to edit, so this amendment is under a dog running at large in the city. So again, this is just on public property. You have to either be on a leash or in a designated off-leash area. I think a lot of people probably think that that's the law anyway. And I think, to me, this is an additional tool to address, for the, for the law enforcement to address if somebody is off-leash, if a dog is off-leash and causing issues. But I guess while the Chief is up here, I would just ask if, if there is an amendment to the amendment that you, I mean, I guess my question is, would you support this, or would it make it more difficult to do your job? I mean, is this language in number two subject to the vetting? I understand the disposed-of language would be, but are you concerned with legal issues in the Second Amendment?
Yeah, I mean, it, again, most of, in a huge majority, if not 90-something percent, are dogs that are unaccompanied roaming. And the second most popular, for lack of a better term, is, you know, a dog that's on its property and another dog walking by. And to somebody's point about where the sidewalk ends or doesn't end in a little grassy spot, it might be on that person's property where that other dog might want to take advantage of, and an altercation. So either way, the ordinance would, if a dog comes off the property, it's considered at large. And with no ability or intent to control somebody's public property, I don't know. I'm just seeing how this would correct those scenarios.
All right, we're gonna go to Councilor Berry, and then Peppin, and then Goodwin. Do, okay, thank you. Berry, and then Goodwin. And just a reminder, we are still on our amendment, so try to keep your discussions focused on those amendments, and questions for the Chief focus on the amendments. Yes, Councilor Berry?
Then I don't have a comment if we're sticking to the amendment. I'm actually for them, but again, I want to maybe make sure that we maybe get legal involved in this, just to make sure that there, we can hold teeth to these, because I think it is good, because there would be other ones I would love to see changed with how much we fine. To be very honest, I think $100 for second, third, fourth, fifth offenses is ridiculous. I think it needs to be much higher, but I also know that I'm not allowed to say what I want it to be. I know that's a statute. So maybe having a legal weigh-in on that change and what we can do legally to hold some teeth to it.
Thank you. Councilor Goodwin?
Excuse me, thank you. With regard to the amendments, certainly the striking of disposed-of and replace with investigate is, it, it sounds better, but I think the Chief has indicated that the state's language says, is different. So I think I err slightly on not striking that, if only for consistency with the state RSA and making sure that we are not, we don't have any gaps between what the state is language and our own, however imperfect the state's language is. I could be convinced otherwise. The amendment to add within a posted area such as the city dog park, I think makes sense. So as, you know, previously discussed, the at-large here means public property. So this is city streets, city parks, city sidewalks. This does not pertain to private property, so you can have your dog off-leash on your private property in any which way, fashion you want. As soon as that dog crosses your property line into the public right-of-way, we are saying now that it needs to be on a leash, and that voice control is not a sufficient method of control for your dog. Unless, and the one exception is, if it's in a posted area where the dog is allowed to be off-leash on city property, of which we are only currently aware of one, which is the city dog park. So functionally, that's what we're saying, is that as soon as, you know, you, your property is your property, do what you want. In terms of like liability for, or requirements by the city, your, your responsibility as dog owner picks up as soon as you enter the public right-of-way, and voice control is no longer a method of control if this ordinance is adopted as, as proposed. So that, as a non-dog owner, that seems reasonable to me. I have met very well-trained dogs that occasionally will break with voice command, right? And that, you know, as a, as a non-dog owner, like, I guess I'm a little less sympathetic, because it's just kind of like, dude, it's your dog, you gotta, you know, I don't want your dog up in my, you know, upon me, right? So it's like, I, I'm, I'm sympathetic to dog owners wanting freedom, but at the same time, it's just like, you know, your voice control is not, to me, a fail-safe method of controlling a dog, and we've heard here from other dog owners that seem to agree with that. So I would be in favor of this amendment and having a leash be required but for posted areas.
Thank you. Other questions for the Chief while we have them? All right, thank you, Chief Macklin. I think you're set. Appreciate it. All right, other discussion related to the amendment? Councilor Vincent?
I would only suggest that, because there's so much change here, that you'd send it back to committee.
We haven't voted on the amendments, so we'll hold off on at least that recommendation till we see that we have an amended ordinance. But let's see if there's more discussion on the amendments, and then maybe vote. Councilor Goodwin?
I guess the question for Councilor Parity-Catanzaro is what her thinking is of the disposed-of, if they, they still think that that is worth pursuing, or if we might have changed the opinion on that proposed amendment with feedback from the Chief.
Yeah, Councilor Parity-Catanzaro?
Yes. Two possibilities. Number one, I would amend my amendment with consent of my second to not include the first part. But I also would rather this pass as-is. If people do want to send it back to committee, just pass this as-is. At least this will cover the at-large unaccompanied dog, because that is one issue, unless people are comfortable now passing it with the second part of the amendment.
Yeah. Councilor Gibson?
Just real quickly, I've had experience with quote "voice-controlled" dogs. I lost a dog to quote "voice-controlled" dogs. And I'll admit, it was my dog's fault. The only problem was, he was this little 15-pound that got chewed up by two shepherds. And not picking on shepherds, but that's what happened. So I'm totally against allowing voice control on public way.
Sorry to hear that. So let's, if there's no discussion, resolve our amendments. As of, as it stands right now, we have both parts included. If our two, our motion maker and our second are unwilling to remove the first, we're gonna vote on these two in its entirety?
I would like to remove the first part of the amendment.
All right, and our second, or would you?
I agree to remove.
Okay, great. So now, we are just with the second piece, which is now our only piece, which is including the section that states that a dog, excuse me, the dog is accompanied by the owner or custodian and under their voice control within a posted off-leash area such as a city dog park.
Clarifying questions.
Yes.
I'm completely in favor of this, but I still am a little worried about, can this be enforced? Because it's, I don't know where the state is, because I thought when this was originally in committee, and my recollection could be wrong, was that they didn't say that we could do strictly leash law. So I guess where I'd vote for this, but I'm just worried, like, what happens if this passes and it doesn't meet that?
I will think on that, yeah. Go ahead, Councilor Goodwin.
So before this amendment, this was reviewed by the city attorney?
Yes, the previous version, the version that's in front of you, unamended.
And so the question is whether or not this amendment passes muster?
Correct.
So for fear of dragging this out, do we want to get the city attorney's opinion on the amendment?
I think it wouldn't be the worst thing at this point, just to verify that what we're doing is, I think, right. I apologize for delaying it further, but I do think, just to make sure that that piece is within our legal authority to enforce and include, I think it probably, at this point, seems to be the right choice. And again, I know folks are here tonight to see this pass, but we just want to cross all of our Ts and dot all of our Is, and make sure we legally can do this. So I think, yeah, I think at this point, I would like to send it back to committee. And at that point, the committee, you do not need to do anything with this at this point, other than wait for an attorney's review of the amendment. I would say, if there are other amendments folks are looking to include before it makes its way back to us, please flag that for the city manager, so that he can get a quick legal review on those additional amendments, so that we don't have to go through this process again. But I think, yeah, if we send it back to committee, it might be ideal. You got what you wanted. Yes, city manager?
Yeah, it's going back to committee, so this is, this can wait, but I just wanted to point out, usually when we have a substantive change after a public hearing, we'd schedule another public hearing, and it's up to the council whether or not this is deemed substantive. But right now, our ordinance says that you can keep a dog off-leash under voice control, and now we're saying, no longer can you.
Yeah.
So it might be a radical enough change, for lack of some better word, where you'd need another public hearing after we get to committee and legal opinion.
I think that, especially where we're getting a legal opinion on a change that we're making, that it would, we would want another public hearing as well. So I would, I would recommend the same. So, sorry for the delay, folks, but I think it's the right thing to do.
For the point of order, does it make, truly confused, do, should we vote on the amendment or hold on voting on the amendment until we get legal opinion?
I think it's going to committee. Committee can include the amendment with the illegal opinion, it'll come back to us in its final version. How's that sound?
So no vote required?
No vote required. Sound good? Yes, Gibson?
So the first reading will stand on this, so it'll be coming back second reading? No.
We, we had a second reading, but he's, I think he's thinking about, with the public hearing in the amendment. We would need just a public hearing on the change, correct? Yeah, I think it would just be public hearing at the next meeting when this comes forward, and we can vote on it then. How's that?
Okay.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Sorry for the confusion. Sorry, folks. All right, that will then move us to our resolutions, which are, we're still in unfinished business. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 34-25, which is to authorize the city manager to amend the contract with Beta Group, Inc. of Manchester, New Hampshire, to provide contract administration and construction inspection services associated with the replacement of the water main on Main Street from Indigo Hill Road to Nato Street, which, if approved, would contract with Beta Group, Inc. of Manchester for an amount not to exceed $180,000. City clerk?
Resolution number 3425, to authorize the city manager to amend the contract with Beta Group, Inc. of Manchester, New Hampshire, to provide contract administration and construction inspection services associated with the replacement of the water main on Main Street from Indigo Hill Road to Nato Street.
Thank you. Resolution 34-25, hemmed and redded first and second time, is now open to further amendment. No amendment being offered. I'll look for a motion on Resolution 34-25. Councilor Peppin? Councilor Peppin moves for the adoption of Resolution 34-25, seconded by Councilor Gibson. Motion for the councils on the adoption of Resolution 34-25, discussion? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of the adoption of Resolution 34-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilor Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity-Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
All right, Resolution 34-25 has been adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 35-25, which is to authorize the city manager to contract with GVC Construction of Lunenburg, Massachusetts, to replace the water main on Main Street from Indigo Hill Road to Nato Street, which, if approved, would contract with GVC Construction for an amount not to exceed $1,729,658. City clerk?
Resolution number 3525, to authorize the city manager to contract with GVC Construction of Lunenburg, Massachusetts, to replace the water main on Main Street from Indigo Hill Road to Nato Street.
Thank you. Resolution 35-25, hemmed and redded first and second time, is now open to further amendment. Seeing no amendment being offered, I'll look for a motion on Resolution 35-25. Councilor Peppin?
Motion accepted.
All right. Councilor Peppin moves for the adoption of Resolution 35-25, seconded by Councilor Vincent. Motion for the council is on the adoption of Resolution 35-25, discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of the adoption of Resolution 35-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilor Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes, stepped out.
Parity-Catanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Berry?
Yes.
Resolution 35-25 has been adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 36-25. City council vote to authorize a bond to replace the water main on Main Street from Indigo Hill Road to Nato Street, which, if approved, would allow the city manager to borrow up to $1,909,658 for a period not to exceed 15 years. City clerk?
Resolution number 3625. City council vote to authorize a bond to replace the water main on Main Street from Indigo Hill Road to Nato Street.
Thank you. Resolution 36-25, hemmed and redded first and second time, is now open to further amendment. No amendment being offered. I'll look for a motion on Resolution 36-25. Councilor Berry?
Sorry, motion to accept as presented?
Thank you. Councilor Berry moves for the adoption of Resolution 36-25, seconded by Councilor Goodwin. Motion for the councils on the adoption of Resolution 36-25, discussion? Councilor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. I should have spoke up a little earlier, I apologize. So, you know, we've been picking away at these water mains that are ancient here in a city, and we've been making some really good progress. And this is a water main that desperately needs to be upgraded. We have several breaks there, a year, every other year, whatever it may be. It'll just be another water main that, you know, we won't have to worry about, so to speak, for a while. I think we're putting the money in the right place. It is a lot of money, but I think it's definitely a good move to make it a better city. You know, when you have a water main break, there's a lot of things that go involved, repairing it, the labor, the manpower, then the, then the destruction of the street. You know, we just saw, we only did High Street a while back, and then we had a issue over there, and, you know, there's a patch there now, and it just, it's just nice to be able to address this. There'll be a nice road there, so, and I do believe several years ago, the council came up with some type of idea that, you know, they're not gonna put no more money in the top of the ground, because the problems are in the bottom of the ground, which underneath. So I think it's a good move, and I'm sure that everybody will vote in favor.
Thank you. Discussion? All right? Yes, Councilor Gibson?
This is just a question on the, my understanding was, is that we wanted to go further than where it's going to end, but the state would not approve that. Is that correct?
This is for city manager, city manager Velmore?
Yes, that's correct. We wanted to replace it where it presently is, in the travel portion of the road, and they wanted to, they wouldn't let us do that. They wanted to go to the shoulder, which created much greater expense as far as moving utility poles, wetlands issues, property issues with driveways and so forth and so on. So the council decided to stop where our street ends and not go any further into the state right away.
Okay. And I apologize, I was not here for the previous, but will the engineering for this take into account what we may have to do in the future for the remainder of that water line?
There'll be need, we'll need to do more engineering work when and if we move forward onto the state right away, but that, again, that's an issue for another day. It's not completely designed to go all the way.
No, I know, but what I'm meaning is that...
It's taking into account, you know, there's a valve there that...
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Vincent?
Yeah, just one comment on that. The state is being completely unreasonable about it. I've been on the phone several times, a state representative several months ago, want, no, nothing to do. I don't know what we did to make the state so unhappy. I mean, we've, we played the game just like everybody else does, you know? We play ball, but they're just being unreasonable. I mean, I... I mean, I went to, I went to the governor and tried to talk to him, it's just not happening, and I just don't understand why. So what the committee felt is, what we're going to do is this, we're going to let the water main break, and they have to patch the road, or they'll have to pave the road. They just paved it, so there'll be patches all over their road, because they own it. And of course, they want to let us have the road, because they don't want to pay for the, what's going on. It's just absurd, and it's just another way that the state is being tough with the cities and towns, and downshifting the money to the taxpayers in this city. It's ridiculous, thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Seeing none, if you're in favor of Resolution 36-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Katanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Resolution 36-25 has been adopted. Chair recognizes the clerk for a second reading on Resolution 39-25, which is to authorize the city manager to contract with Wright Pierce Engineers of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, for engineering and design services for the replacement of water mains on Indigo Hill Road and Old Rochester Road, which, if approved, would contract with Wright Pierce for an amount not to exceed $120,000. City clerk?
Resolution number 3925, to authorize the city manager to contract with Wright Pierce Engineers of Portsmouth, New Hampshire, for engineering and design services for the replacement of water mains on Indigo Hill Road and Old Rochester Road.
Thank you. Resolution 39-25, having been read a first and second time, is now open to further amendment. Right, seeing no amendment, I'll look for a motion on Resolution 39-25. Counselor Vincent?
I'll make a motion to move on Resolution 3925.
Counselor Vincent moves for the adoption of Resolution 39-25, seconded by Counselor Peppin. Motion for the councils on the adoption of Resolution 39-25, is there a discussion? Seeing no discussion, if you're in favor of the adoption of Resolution 39-25, you'll state by saying yes. If you're not, you'll state by saying no. City clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Peppin?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Parity Katanzaro?
Yes.
Micho?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Resolution 39-25 has been adopted. Brings us to item 16, which is new business. We have two resolutions tonight. The chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 40-25. Council vote to dissolve Mental Health and Wellness Committee. City clerk?
Resolution number 4025. Council vote to dissolve the Mental Health and Wellness Committee, February 18th, 2025. Whereas the Somersworth City Council adopted Resolution 4623 to form the Mental Health and Wellness Committee, and whereas this committee was tasked with providing ongoing focus and assistance for systems to support mental health, wellness, and recovery opportunities in Somersworth, and develop community-wide coalitions to also support this mission. And whereas the Hilltop Health Alliance, a grassroots community organization supporting the same mission and goals, was successfully established and has been actively meeting. And whereas there is no need to duplicate or draw down from the efforts of the successful community organization. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Somersworth, that the Mental Health and Wellness Committee has met its charge and shall be dissolved. Sponsored by Mayor Matt Gerding, approved city attorney.
Thank you. Resolution 40-25, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Chair recognizes the clerk for a first reading on Resolution 41-25. Council vote to dissolve the Sustainability Committee. City clerk?
Resolution number 4125. Council vote to dissolve the Sustainability Committee, February 18th, 2025. Whereas the Somersworth City Council adopted Resolution 1711 to form the Sustainability Committee no later than March 1st, 2011. And whereas there were a number of initiatives and goals that were successfully accomplished during the tenure of this committee, and whereas the committee and its membership have not met since 2022. And whereas there are other community committees and council standing committees that overlap in task and focus. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Somersworth, that the Sustainability Committee has met its charge and shall be dissolved. Sponsored by Mayor Matt Gerding, approved city attorney.
Thank you. Resolution 41-25, having been read a first time, will remain in first reading until our next regularly scheduled meeting. Brings us to item 17, which is comments by visitors. Somersworth City Council Mayor's Office welcome all visitors and encourage you to voice your opinions and views at council meetings in accordance with Council Rules 7-C. A time limit of five minutes per person shall be in effect until, unless council wishes to suspend the rules. Speaker shall not enter into a debate with any persons, the mayor, council members, city manager, or department heads. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Yes, please come on up, state your name and ward in which you live.
I think you know me, but I'm Bonnie McNair. I'm in Ward 1. I'm also the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce here in Somersworth. Just very quickly, we've been hearing a lot from folks in the community about complaints, about taxes, about all the things that nobody likes. Well-plowed cities, thank you very much, DPW. And one of the things I recently, in response to the tax uproar, I'm going to call it, was to, I just put out a little teeny-bitty op-ed explaining how taxes are, how they work, why they are the way they are. And I got an overwhelming response from the folks of our fair city who would like to be more involved, and they would like to be more educated, and they would like to be more engaged. As the executive director of the chamber, I am in a unique position to work with the city to make something like that happen, so I would like to formally invite my city council to work with me on a workshop, so I can start getting that going. And that's all, that's all I got.
Thank you. I love taxes, I'll be there.
All right, who doesn't love a tax?
All right. Any others from the public wishing to speak this evening? All right, seeing none, that will bring us to item 18 on our agenda, which is closing comments by council members. See, Counselor Witham was supposed to be my number one today, but he's out, so we're going to go Counselor Goodwin, you're up first.
I've got nothing.
All right, Counselor Barry?
I'm just going to play off our, another comment by visitor at the moment. I will say, I've seen a lot of complaints recently in a lot of different forums. I actually will say, I've also seen a lot of Dada Boys, "Good Job" as well. I'm happy to see both being shared. One of the things, I think I said, I missed last council, but the council before, if you have a complaint, I would love to hear a solution. And I think that kind of goes with education sometimes, where something's not right, but you don't necessarily know how to fix it. So I love that idea, all for helping with that as much as I can. And then I'm just going to say, a lot of times with taxes, what I want people to kind of keep in the back of their head, and I very much encourage you to come to some of the dates that were expressed by our city manager about the budget, when those are going to be aired, when you can come, be a part of the discussions, but, you know, there's a lot of stuff we don't talk about that our city money goes towards, like, underground. You know, we just only care when it breaks, right? Like, we don't care what it takes to maintain it, to keep it going. As long as it's working, we don't care a lot of the time. So I just want people to kind of keep that in mind. You know, it's great when it works, it's not great when it doesn't, and it costs money to fix it. So that's my two cents tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Peppin, you're next.
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to thank our Public Works Department. This was a long, dour, rainy storm. I don't know how they stayed awake all night long and all the next day, just trying to clean up stuff. My hat's off to your crew. And the other thing I'd just like to mention is that, coming from the fire service, I plow my two hydrants on each side of my property for fire protection. The fire department's been out there shoveling like no tomorrow. I urge anybody that has a fire hydrant near their house, to get out and shovel it, please. Coming from the fire department and sometimes trying to find a fire hydrant underneath the snowbank, where you don't really know where it is, and you're trying to probe where you think the hydrant is, and then the house is on fire beside it, it makes it very, very difficult. And the longer that snow stays, we get rain on top of it, it freezes, and it gets very, very hot, even if you can remove it, tap that hydrant. So I guess I'm encouraging the neighbors to adopt a hydrant in your, in your area. Just try to keep it clean. It will help our firefighters, try to catch up to them. I just talked to the fire chief, he said they were almost caught up to this last snowstorm. I've been by a few streets, and I can't even see the hydrants where they are, and I know where some of them are, and they can't even see them, because the snow is right over the top of them. So I would appreciate it if everybody could come out and clean out a hydrant in front of them, and even your next-door neighbor one, so awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. I love that, "adopt a hydrant." That's great. Counselor Vincent?
Thank you, Your Honor. Great job, Public Works, very good job, very professional, too. And I got a quick, quick hydrant story. So I did take off, went on a little vacation, and as owner, being owner of a fireworks store, I have to have the fire department and state and feds come in. And a good friend of mine at the fire department sent me a picture. Now, I do all my own plowing, okay? And I do all my own stuff, and my, the hydrant there is taken care of. He sent me a picture, because I had a fill-in. It looked like he plowed the hydrant up with snow, and the fire, because I've got a good rapport with the fire department. He sends me his picture, what the heck? I go, "I'm on vacation," so they shoveled it, so good job, good job at the fire department, taking good care of us. Shifting gears back to the tax thing, you know, when I was younger, I was like everybody else, starting off, I had a family, and funds were tight, I was on a budget, and I purchased a mobile home when I was 20 years old. And at the time, purchasing a mobile home was a good investment for me, because it was low taxes, it wasn't a lot of money. But now, after this reavail, it's like nobody can hide now. You know, the piece of pie, I used to have a good chunk of it, but slowly, the piece of pie is going away. And look, I'm on this side of it, I understand it. There's maintenance, there's keeping the city up. We could say, we probably could give money back to the taxpayers, but you're not going to have the services that you have. So, but to my constituents and my fellow counselors, look here, it's coming up, there's a balance here, and you've got to be good with the balance, because you can dig a hole that sometimes might not come out of it. There's been a couple of cities and towns that have filed bankruptcy in this state, and I don't want to be, I don't think we're close to it, but look, it's good times right now, but when it goes to bad times, you better be prepared. I've been through the bad times. I'm 60 years old, I'm not as old as Marty, but, and he's seen the bad times, so please, you know, it's easy to say on the vote, yes, but sometimes you have to make some cuts that are real hard. Thanks a lot for listening to me.
Thank you. Counselor Gibson?
I'll just follow on what my fellow counselors had said. Thank you to Public Works first responders for the job that they do all year round, but especially Public Works for me being able to find my street. But the toughest thing is with taxes, and the state of New Hampshire is the one of, if not, I can't remember if it's actually the lowest, support to public education in the United States. And I agree with statements that have been made by some of the school board people, that it's an attack on public education. I think it's ludicrous that they're handing out vouchers to people to go to private schools because the public schools are so bad. Well, they wouldn't be quite so bad if the state would help fund them. Anybody who is living in this community, or any other community that's suffering under the burden of special education, and I think we do a heck of a job in this town with special ed, with what we have to work with, but the flip side of that is, and I've heard this from people and from people in the system, you do a good job, next thing you know, you got more work to do. Because people say, "Ooh, they treat their kids nice, let's come visit." So you're a squirrel in a cage spinning a wheel, trying to keep up with everything that's going on. And the only answer in the long run is if enough communities and citizens get together and say, "Enough, you can't keep downshifting to the local tax base. We all are not rich." And if that's what they want, then I guess all of us are going to have to move somewhere, because I sure as hell ain't rich. Oops, sorry. That's my bit. Speak out, speak up, be loud.
Thank you. Counselor Parity Katanzaro?
Thank you. I have to also echo the Public Works, I just, I cannot believe the amount of snow that has come down in the last week or so, and there's just like nowhere to put it, and somehow the streets are clear. It's amazing, so, well done. I thank you, Bonnie, for inviting us. I won't say I like taxes, but I like talking about taxes and educating people about taxes, so count me in for that workshop. And thank you so much, too, for educating people about how taxes work. As people know, and as you mentioned, New Hampshire, very last in the nation for what it contributes to public education from the state. Part of that's because we don't have an income tax, or a sales tax. That's where many, many other states fund a majority of their education. There's always a little bit of disparity between zip codes. There's always a town that has better schools than the next town, but in New Hampshire, that disparity is so stark, that the communities with the most get more money to do, to educate fewer kids, and the communities with the least have less money to educate more kids. It's really a lose-lose, so anything we can do for the state, and thank you, Mayor Gerding, for leading the way on helping us raise our voices on that, but hopefully the state will chip in a little bit more. I also just wanted to thank the community members that came out this evening. It's a great example of seeing an issue, and as Counselor Barry said, coming up with a solution, asking for a specific change, and, you know, I think we're all always interested in making a change that is for the betterment of our community. And I will just add to Counselor Gibson's comments and say, yes, get involved, be loud, be kind to everyone, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Michu?
Thank you, Your Honor. I got a message from Counsel Cameron earlier, before I came to the meeting, and she asked me to read it, and let the, remind people, that could you, in your closing remarks, remind people that on Saturday, April 19th, of the city, why clean up in honor of Earth Day? Councilors will be in charge of their wards with designated areas, she'll map out, but open to suggestions. So if anybody has any suggestions about this, please contact Counselor Cameron. And also, I'd like to thank Public Works, doing a great job. It seemed the past two years, snow was pretty much absent. All of a sudden, this year, it's dumping on us, so Public Works is doing a great job trying to keep the streets clean. I want to remind residents that while they're out there either plowing or shoveling their driveway, do not put it back out in the road. I've noticed that. And when the city plow, sidewalk plow goes by, they're there for a reason. They're cleaning so people can walk on the sidewalks. It's not there for you to shovel the snow back onto the sidewalk to make more room for you. So please, find another area besides back in the road or on the sidewalks that have been plowed. And also, I encourage people, if you have a fire hydrant in your neighborhood, please shovel it out, because a friend of mine told me that she saw on Facebook, that she made a comment about, okay, go out, if you have a chance to clean out your fire hydrants in your neighborhood. One resident responded with, "That's their job." No, it's not their job. We're a community, we're all together, we're all one. So if you have a fire hydrant in your neighborhood, don't wait for your neighbor to do it. If you see it, not shovel, please go out in there and just shovel it. It's not that much of a big difference. And what else? Well, I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. They say that life imitates art sometimes, and I'm sure you all feel the same way. Sometimes I feel like life imitates city council. I have just a really brief, quick, funny story that you all reminded me of, which I have just a really brief, quick, funny story that you all reminded me of, which was yesterday, we had so much snow that the snow had piled up so high on my fence that my dog jumped out of my yard and was an at-large dog yesterday. She's very kind, very sweet, and she did not do anything wrong, but it was, it was just like too perfect. I was like, this is literally everything we've talked about today. Anyway, that will bring us to item 19, which is future agenda items. I think the only thing that still remains is our at-large dog ordinance. Is there any other future agenda items folks want to add? I see none. Brings us to item 20, non-public, we have none. Item 21, which is adjournment.
Make a motion.
Counsel Vincent moves the city council standing adjournment, seconded by Counsel Gibson. Question for the council is adjournment.